I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Not sure how well this might be going to now. Okay. Set it back then. I need to add. Okay. Baby guy. All right. I'm going to add another item to new business. It's add a motion to set a public hearing on January 20th at 7:15 PM for a retail off sale malt beverage in South Dakota farm wine license filled by CS Incorporated doing business as Mike's Place. So that's being added to new business. Assume there's no conflict of interest items. So we'll move to.
You want to make a motion to accept the agenda?
Yes, please.
Want to add somebody to the agenda?
Sure.
Also, we just want to make a report from the committee that may have.
Well, can you do that during the committee report?
I just really have an add to the agenda because we're going to ask for three things and I it's not really the committee report. Can I just be add to the agenda?
Report from Delta Committee.
Yeah. Yeah, the committee request for.
And what are they?
I'll just go and do it when we get there. That's okay.
Well, I think people should know before they approve the agenda.
Okay. All right. This is a report. I don't know if all the council members have this. Does everybody have the facility review final report of the PUNCH 122 of 13? Do you all have a copy of that?
Scott only made copies for the committee.
Okay, they might all want to see a copy of it. Anyway, there are three things that they asked for and there Kim Moore is going to be the chairman of our committee. And there were three things in there that the report asked for and that was what I was going to talk about. So if we could just wait till then.
Okay. Yep. So are we doing during the committee report or you want this new business?
During the new business.
Okay. All right. Is that clear, everybody? Okay. So anybody want to make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
We'll move.
Did I get a second?
Sure. Second.
I want to make the correction.
And there's also a correction to our meeting notes from the 29th. We did go into executive session and that was.
Did everybody approve the agenda?
We should run on the agenda before we go into the minutes.
Okay. Yeah. Well, there will be a correction to the minutes on the 29th. All in favor of the agenda as with the changes?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Regular meeting minutes from the 15th.
Make a motion. Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
And discussion? Motion carried. Meeting minutes from the 29th, which is also there was a concern from a citizen that we improperly went into executive session going forward. That will always be on our agenda and usually was. It just was overlooked on that one on the 29th. Besides that, December 29th meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you have a no?
Yeah. Okay. Bills in between $55,976.55.
Motion to approve.
And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you have a no?
Yeah. Okay. Bills in between $55,976.55. And discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you have a no?
Yeah. Okay. Bills in between $55,976.55. Bills in between $55,976.55. Is it budgeted? Is it in the budget to come out?
I don't think you budget this.
Yes, for this person, yes. This is the second year.
That's the way it's done.
So it's in the budget. Sales tax. I'd just like to see that and maybe come by and you can show it to me and explain it to me. That's actually in the budget under sales tax that you're going to take out these things that are coming out of sales. Okay. This is the second year we've done that. Any other discussion on the current claims? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have a presentation from progress here in the communications from the public on Matt. It is now your turn.
I guess we're going to face it toward you guys. I guess the audience won't be able to see it as well, but this will be here so people will be able to look at it.
I think the most of the council has the printout and I've seen it.
Okay. So maybe we'll face it out.
I don't know. You guys all have printouts, right? Are you okay with it?
We have that in City Hall. Would that be available in City Hall?
This, we'll leave this here tonight.
Great.
Thanks for having us back. This is a report on Butler Park master plan and excited to be here. It's a great plan for Butler Park and it's been a great process. Thank you for having us and we are interested in helping this move forward however we can. So as you have questions, feel free to contact us in the future anytime before midnight. All right. I want to just update you on the plan itself and talk a little bit how it came to be about the major elements of it and then take any questions that you might have tonight. So master plan itself is not a construction plan, right? It's not where you go out and you pit in the fence, you know, with post eight feet on center or what have you. Master plan is the vision for how to proceed. And this particular master plan was built on the needs assessment that we did that we presented a few weeks ago and it benefited from the same process. So in the needs assessment, every meeting that we had for that, we also were taking input on Butler Park and learning from the community their desires and ideas for the park. And all that has gone into making this plan. So there was public meetings and online poll. We went up to talk to the kids in the summertime. It seems like it was just summer yesterday. I don't know what happened in the fall, but all that went in. And then with our parks committee, we worked through different options and finally arrived at the final master plan that you see here. The book documents the history that we uncovered during this process and, you know, the needs assessment itself came up with a little bit of planning structure for you about how to proceed. So, you know, committing to making improvements over time is the start of that. Really the city is working on joining some of the parcels within the park just to make some of that legal framework easier in the future. Getting a site survey is a big next step for making sure all the dimensions and the grading work and then using the parks foundation and committees to move this forward over time and identify the leaders in the community that will be interested in specific parts of the plan as it proceeds. One of the interesting things about the plan as you look at is that it looks a lot like the park that's up there right now. And that's because what we really found out in all this is that it has great bones. And the community doesn't see that this is a time to radically change the program of Butler Park. We're not going to tear out all the fields and put in a rodeo grounds or a roller coaster like some of the kids thought would be fun. It's not that time in the park's history. It's serving its function with the bare necessities, but everybody would really like to invest in it and make it better. So considering that, we've started thinking about the park in terms of different centers and the activities and people that those centers serve. So there's five. A family center that's focused on the playground area, a teen and sports center that's based on the skate park, basketball in that area, the baseball complex is one, soccer is its own, and then open ground just left open for the future. So dig into each one of those a little bit. The family center is the northwest corner of the site, built around the existing playground. It's. I heard somebody talking. Sorry. Starts with that existing playground, which is a great playground. The swings and things over time will need to change and when that happens, it starts developing this radial pattern that you see on the plan that allows for kind of a extension over time. Now, the family center itself really came from the kids. When we were talking to them, they said, well, why can't we have a place where there's shade for picnic tables and that and then we can play in the playground outside of that. So the core of the family center is a picnic pavilion with some nice lawn where kids can run around with bare feet and not get goat heads stuck in their toes. That entire area is surrounded by a fence, so you're, you know, if you're there with your kids, they're not going to escape out into the wilds without at least going through a gateway. There's also room in there for a spray park. And then really critical is a restroom, a changing room for that spray park. And the restroom is really critical to the park, having a nice facility where the kids, well, especially kids can go in and go to the bathroom without needing to go home because they're scared of the pit toilet. So that's the family center. That's related to the parking lots up to the south of it a little bit. And you can see we've oriented the parking lots on this so they relate to the street grid and that moves the open space into the center of the park. The, if I did the family center. The next center is the teen sports center. And again, we're really building on the bones that are there. So what we've shown on the plan is an expansion of the skate park and allowing for more of the bike stunts that might happen and some of the dirt bike pieces there. Adding a picnic shelter at the head of the horseshoe courts, realigning the parking lot a little bit and then taking the tennis courts and just resurfacing those, taking the fence down from around the basketball court but putting it back up so just the tennis courts are fenced. And one of the things that came up in our discussions quite a bit was a place for teenagers in the park and the skate park is considered that. Now teenagers like to be able to see and be seen. You don't always like to hear the teenagers, but they need to be in the center of our community, right? We need to have our eyes on them, know where they're at. And so part of this area is what we're calling a teen center and that's kind of the back of where that restroom would be. And we're not exactly sure what a teen center might consist of. We've done a lot of looking and we have a few ideas based on being teenagers ourselves once and, you know, looking around. But we think that having a place that could be specifically for them with, we've talked about different things like hammocks or benches or, or big swings, you know? The swings are fun even as you grow older. So place that's specifically for them and welcome for them to do that, come and hang out as a relationship to the parking lot, you know? So that's the teen and sports center. The baseball center is really built around improving the fields themselves and rebuilding some of the infrastructure that's there, whether it be fences or the press box, adding some storage to that so that some of the sheds can go away. And also as you move south, getting rid of that parking lot down there and getting some trees and other picnic areas going in there. We're showing a concession restroom picnic storage structure there, so large combined This is one that really needs the user group to take a close look at what they need to function properly. You know, we just heard the other day they have some ideas about the softball field and as this proceeds, those guys really need to step up and talk about what their specific needs are. The soccer center allows us to bring up a full-size field and what that would basically do is where the existing field is here, widen that and lengthen it just a little bit. That'd require a couple retaining walls to fit that in there. But when you look at that area, you think, well, why are all those facing the same direction? Well, on the soccer field, you really need them to be oriented north-south so the goals are not, goalies are not facing into the sun during play. But we're able to get one of each size of fields in here, parking lot, and then in relation to its shelter, you know, kind of an open lawn area that could serve as a great greeting area for tournaments and the like. We've added a bosque of trees, we'd call it, in there but to fill in that a little bit more so there's good shady areas for picnicking during the tournament and finding a place out of the sun. No, I guess the last center is unprogrammed space to the south of the park. And what we heard is that is just open, but it's used for flying kite or playing frisbee. And, you know, part of the process was realizing that every corner of the park doesn't need to be programmed with an activity, right? Sometimes you want to just go out and hang out in the grass. So the big change down there might be actually irrigating it so it doesn't appear to be the weedy, a weedy patch on the corner down there that greets people as they come up from down below. So that's the main, those are the main five centers of the park. There's a few other little things that kind of come along with that. Gateway signs, a master irrigation plan so that the whole park is irrigated and that's a, that's a commitment, you know, because you provide water and put it on the ground. This is the town's one big recreation park, so we think it's worth the energy of putting the water on the ground there. There's a couple memorials within the park and we'd keep those in this plan, but we'd encourage that future memorials be dedicated towards the items that are on the plan, you know? So the shelters and the restrooms and those kind of things, that can be how, that can be how giving happens in the park in the future.
Matt?
Yes?
We have a public hearing at 7:20, so I'll let you do about 30 more seconds and then we'll have to do the hearing and then we can come back and have questions. I'm sorry for the interruption.
That's all right. I'd probably chat all night long if you didn't stop me. So I get, just to, you know, there's some, we have lighting and tree planting all within that and a little bit more about implementation in the plan, but I think when we come back it would be great just to take any questions that you might have about the park or the needs assessment or any of the other things.
Yeah, we'll, we'll let you be first after the hearing for questions.
Okay, that's fine.
If people can wait. Sorry about that.
That's it?
All right. It is pretty much 7:20, exactly 7:20. And we have a hearing for a use permit on review. Is Ms. Rose here?
Yes, ma'am.
There you are. How do you pronounce your name?
Danell.
Oh, okay.
Danell Rose.
I will, yeah, that's, yeah. I just wanted to give the council and the public an opportunity to address any concerns they may have with your request.
Okay.
I know we've already talked, so I.
Shall I introduce myself and talk a little bit about what I want? That means in Lakota, I would like to speak. Good evening. I greet you all with a warm heart and a hearty handshake, all the way from this side of the room, all through here and to everybody on this side of the room. My name is Danell Rose and I grew up in the middle of South Dakota. I've worked about 40 years in behavioral health and I just retired October 31st of this year. So I'm trying to figure out what I'm going to do with the rest of my life. So because I've been a professional mental health alcohol drug counselor for this length of time, I'd like to continue to keep my fingers in the pie for a while, partly because my renewal fees for all my licenses is $2,000 every two years. So I need to generate some income to continue those licenses until I decide I don't want to do it anymore. So in looking at a place to relocate, I wanted to come to the Black Hills and I visited some communities and actually liked Hot Springs the best. And I found this house that I like on Albany Street, 1738, and it happened to have an apartment in the basement with a separate entrance, which would be ideal for this small counseling program that I would like to have. I anticipate that I'll probably see maybe one or two clients a week to start with. In the past, I had a private practice in Vermillion, South Dakota, and at the most I saw three patients a week, but I was working full-time at that time too. And I had a private practice on the reservation, but I almost starved to death because of the geographical distances and people just don't have insurance to pay for counseling on the reservation. So I've done this before and it has been in my home and actually the neighbors couldn't tell who was coming to visit me as a friend or a relative and who was coming as a client. So there's not much difference in, in that. I think there have been some questions about large family meetings and if, if I happen to work with a large family, I would probably do that counseling in their home because it's, it's much quicker to pick out the issues in their environment than having one person come at a time to the office. And as far as the handicapped and elderly, I would probably also offer them in-home family services in their own home because the stairs going down to the apartment downstairs is probably not something they can handle. So that would be an option for the handicapped and the elderly also. And as, even though I've welcomed veterans into my practice, I don't know that they would choose to come and pay extra. I had been told that the services they get at the VA probably don't cost them, so I'm not sure if the veterans would take advantage of a separate counseling service or not. I've asked that the parking, that the lot be designated so that the parking will be sure to be on my lot and not in the alleyway. I was told when I looked at that spot that the parking has to be within the boundary of my lot, not in the alley. So I'm working on that if this is approved and if I'm able to buy the house. I'm also looking at creating a privacy wall around it to match the, the architecture of the house. Excuse me. And I had a, a nice conversation with one of my neighbors today and I think that we can work out a, a plan, working together, to create a fence that will give her a nicer view than what she has now. Right now she looks out at the back of that house, the yard, the garden and the parking lot across the alley. But I think we can work together and create some kind of trellis maybe or something on a privacy wall. My real estate agent has some vines by her office that are already acclimated to the harsh South Dakota weather, so if my neighbor would want to work with me on that, I think we could create a win-win situation and she would have a good view from her kitchen window. The only groups I had in my previous private practice were the result of individuals coming and then having the same issues and so we would meet in a small group, three, maybe four, to deal with that specific issue. What I'm requesting is not a treatment center, it's not a halfway house, it's not a residential, it's just a small part-time individual counseling opportunity for people if they choose that. I know there's a lot of counseling already available. It's very good. So I'm not anticipating that I would be creating a whole new two-story business there. It would just be a small opportunity in the, in the downstairs. And I wouldn't be doing workshops at that site with 20 or 30 people.
Does anybody have any, I'm sorry, are you?
No.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
What's your certification?
I'm a CSW PIP, Clinical Social Worker Authorized to be in Private Practice.
Instead of the LCSW, you did the same thing?
Yes, South Dakota. And a qualified mental health professional. If the county attorney wanted me to do commitment evaluations, I could do that. And a licensed alcohol counselor.
You just, you didn't think you could make it work trying to rent a building on Main Street or you just?
I don't want to be that big. You know, that's eight to five. I've done that for four years. I kind of like to kick back. I'm getting my retirements and I'd like to just do it part-time.
What would your hours of operation be?
That would be determined by the client who calls in and requests an appointment. So.
Possibly later at night?
Morning, afternoon. Probably not at night, no. Maybe some Saturday mornings if they work and can't get out of work to come to an appointment, but not, not in the evenings, I don't think so. Not on Sundays.
I don't know if the use on review spells that out or not. I don't know if it has stipulations in there for any kind of hours of operation or?
You mean the application? When Scott read it to me, it didn't specify hours or days of operation.
I think it's from the back of your page there. I'm concerned that you won't, how many people have you talked to in the neighborhood?
I sent out 17 certified letters and received 16 signatures back and I'll give those to the. And a licensed alcohol counselor.
You just... You didn't think you could make it work, trying to rent a building on Main Street? Or you just...
I don't want to be that big. You know, that's eight to five. I've done that for forty years. I kind of like to kick back. I'm getting my retirements, and I'd like to just do it part-time.
What would your hours of operation be?
That would be determined by the client who calls in and requests an appointment. So...
Possibly later at night?
Morning, afternoon. Probably not at night, no. Maybe some Saturday mornings if they work and can't get out of work to come to an appointment. But not in the evenings, I don't think so. Not on Sundays.
I don't know if the use on review spells that out or not. I don't know if it has stipulations in there for any kind of hours of operation or...
You mean the application? When Scott read it to me, it didn't specify hours or days of operation.
I think it's from the back of your page there. I'm concerned that you won't... How many people have you talked to in the neighborhood?
I sent out seventeen certified letters and received sixteen signatures back. And I'll give those to the... ...before I leave.
Are there any that were negative or...
I didn't get any comments except the one call I got this afternoon. That's it.
Is there anyone here from your neighborhood?
I don't know.
Yes, you.
Yeah, I'm Linda Barvell. And I did speak with Ms. Rose today. And my concerns are whether the congestion in the alleyway, because it's not that wide of an alley. We have garbage truck that goes down there. Propane delivery comes through there, not to mention if there's ever any emergency vehicles. And I know with other visitors coming in the neighborhood, there's two other neighbors that park in the... Just adjacent to the alleyway. And if they have visitors coming in, the alleyway can get blocked. And so that concerns me and the blockage in the alleyway.
Did you mention the parking would be on your property?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah. But I mean, in the past, they haven't parked on the property, so to speak. Even the renters that were in there before haven't necessarily parked on the property. You know, and there has been a blockage created for the garbage truck and...
But the lady has said that the parking is going to be on her property, not in the alley.
Yeah. So I just, you know, like, y'all wanted to get businesses into the empty buildings downtown. And you have approved a use permit in the past for, I believe it was a gift shop or whatever in somebody's home. But you're kind of working against yourself when you approve these because more and more people are coming forward and wanting businesses in your homes. And I think that's just something to... I mean, I'm not saying she has to have a whole building downtown, just like rent an office or something. There's a counseling office behind a building downtown. She just rents a small area down there and has her counseling behind another business downtown, you know. So I'm not saying she has to have a whole huge building. But I'm just kind of concerned about, you know, not only privacy for her clients, but privacy for people in the neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others from the neighborhood? Yes or no?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay. I thought you were pointing at somebody.
No, I did.
Okay.
And I am planning to have a garage built, too, so my parking will be in the garage at a later date. There used to be a garage there, but it's not there now.
Okay. Anyone from... Any other discussion from the council? Okay, I believe we can...
Couldn't you look at her writing her the documents that she's got about her people?
I think she's just got signatures that they received the notice, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Should we look at it?
The sixteen people that received the notices?
When we received a notice, too, and we had to sign for it at the post office. So that's not in disapproval or approval of what her plan was.
No, but that is a public notification.
Yeah.
And so sixteen of the seventeen were noted. We know were notified.
Yes, and here's the documentation. Does that go to you?
Yeah, I just... Everybody responded, but this one isn't checked.
When were the notices sent?
All seventeen were sent, yes. Oh, when? December 19th.
Scott's been working on this a couple weeks, three weeks. Sounds very well far.
Maybe we should give them two more weeks till next council meeting or do that.
Well, they get certified letters, so I mean, they...
And they were told of this date, this hearing?
Tell me again. There was a letter in there basically saying what I said, plus the letter from Scott. And they won't... I won't send out another batch of notices because it costs a lot.
I don't... They went out the 19th over the holidays. People are done a lot, and it's only January 5th. You haven't even purchased the house yet?
I won't purchase the house unless this passes.
Then it will have to be thirty days from now for the second reading, correct?
I don't think it needs... Does it need a second reading?
No, my understanding is it's slow right now.
She'd like to table what you're saying?
I love to get the motion.
If it's not tabled, I'm voting no.
I think that if you've got certified letters, they ought to know. I knew that we was having this tonight.
It's just a process.
It's not whether they agree or disagree.
Yeah, the motion, and I second the motion.
To do what? Approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
And I need to say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
How many no's and who wasn't?
So three no's?
Weekend, sports, and...
Okay. So I do the math, that motion carried. Where she went?
It was here.
The motion did pass.
It did pass.
Thank you very much, council.
And this is reviewable in a year.
And we're here.
Yes. All right, Matt, can we...
I guess my... Just my concluding remarks are just that it's been a really interesting process. A few things led it to take a little more time overall, but I think that it's been... The plan's been well-served by the time it's been taken, and it's pretty comprehensive. The needs assessment is pretty comprehensive, and we really hope they're useful for you in the future. So if there's any questions, lob them out. Otherwise...
Yeah, I just wanted to see if the community had any questions or concerns. Or I know I've received comments about the softball field and the smaller baseball field switching, things like that. So people are looking at it. And, you know, those are things that we'll address as we implement. It's probably the air from the door. Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of what we were doing and that we're going to be moving forward and try to do what we can with the resources that we have based on that. So I, you know, would really appreciate input from the public, if they have any, if you think of something later. 303 North River Street is where we're at.
Right.
But we'll definitely be contacting you. Any... Wes, did you want to follow up with anything here?
Well, I think we're going to move forward real shortly with putting a committee together. The first committee, and we're a first committee.
Yeah, so we... It will be addressed. We're just... Yes?
One question.
Don't be shy.
Do you recommend underground...
I'm looking at a podium, so if you're back there, just step up.
Underground power chases? Because right now, we've got power above ground, two parts of the park there. Because that would be one of the first major things to do is undergrounding.
For the... Well, yeah. I guess, you know, we didn't identify, like, where that would be or anything.
So that would be up to the committee?
No, that would be up to the construction documents when you start actually planning stuff like that.
Yeah.
We're a long ways from trenching power, you know.
Yeah.
But in most parks across the United States, power is underground, transformers and...
That's usually desired, you know. Rural communities sometimes are quite a bit different, but the... For example, on this, there's lighting. There's a lighting connection made through the park, up the pathway on the west side to connect the library to the northwest corner there. And that, I think that lighting would be best served underground. And that raceway also could be the backbone for what happens with shelters and the spray park and all that as far as power goes as well. So Gerald, I know you're way ahead on the details, so we're in there.
Thank you.
I guess I think there's a lot that we can do out there before we worry about it. Because I know putting power line underground is a very, very expensive endeavor. I'm sure that power lines don't go to good for nothing.
Well, you know, one of the... The centers is a useful tool for thinking about how to do the park because if you think about different methods for proceeding, there's an overall plan that you could develop for doing the park. Or else you can look at the different centers as far as what they need and how to proceed with those. You know, irrigation or lighting or tree planting overall, those are things that can happen overall with the park. But the centers themselves can be a focal point, you know, either for fundraising or for strategizing a achievable project as well, so...
Okay. Since we're on that, I'm going to ask you, under dealing since you brought up the lighting and the water and stuff, if when we proceed with this, are... What would you recommend? That we do all the ball fields and all that stuff and then work irrigation and lighting into that? Or do we work irrigation and lighting and then try to build the rest of it around it?
I think that you need to have some decision-making about how you want to pursue your fundraising for the park. You know, we set an overall schedule for the park for maybe three years before really looking at starting to get things done. And those three years should be spent in the planning phase for this. And fundraising, it could happen quicker. I'm not saying it couldn't happen quicker. You know, you could... If you had a blank check, you could go to town, the next steps. But so to get to your question, there's some parts of it that could be done in sections, and it would depend on the appetite. One of the big ones is the ball field or the soccer field and moving that up. And if that's desired, when you do that, I guess I'd recommend that you do all the parts of what are needed with that because then you can get something that's fully completed and you can say, oh, the soccer complex is done, you know. We got that. Let's move our attention over here now. And, you know, I guess the trouble in small towns is that you have enough for a very small project in the inch along. And that's the way you live. But I guess what we hope with the goal of the master plan is to provide an inspirational vision that, you know, helps you rally towards a couple, maybe one big project, or maybe a few that happen over several years, so...
I guess I have selfish interest in this because I only live a half a block from the park.
Yeah. Let's get rocking and rolling. Sure. Okay, thanks.
Couldn't it be done sequentially, though?
Absolutely.
As an addition at a time, the activity center being the focus, if you will, the familial part of the situation, going with the master plan. Couldn't the electrical, the plumbing, the irrigation, the lighting, all of that stuff be done a section at a time? So and is your suggestion... Excuse me, two questions in regards to the soccer field first. Is that because that's probably the least expensive or...
Well, the soccer field comes out of... Let me get my bearings. Wanting to move from down here up to Butler Park soon. And that was one of the original reasons, I guess, I was invited down here to talk to everybody about that. So that's kind of where that comes from. I guess the actual pressing need for it to move, I'm not sure if it's just a strong desire or if it was planned and budgeted. But so that was where that came from. And, you know, it's not always cheaper to move a lot of dirt to get that soccer field the right size. So that's what will happen with the U-19 field is that some dirt needs to be found or scraped off the existing field and so to make that the correct size. But and I guess I... For your first question, yeah. You know, when you... If you were to develop the family center, say, let's do that this year, you would do all those parts for that area. And part of that... Part of whatever is the first phase will be the planning for thinking through how you get the irrigation for the whole park to actually fit in the ground. And that needs a survey to be part of that. So that needs to wait until that specific point happens. So it's ready to roll.
So your plan is just to get rid of the soccer field that's out back of the owner's center?
We'd like to.
Would that become a leashless dog park back here?
It's definitely been brought up.
Yeah, there's a couple ideas for that. Part of the parking, I think, but there's plenty of room down there, so...
Well, it comes to the socialization of poodles and pit bulls.
I lived in a very small community in Colorado. It was called Berthold, Colorado, and they were having the same thing where they were trying to figure out how they were going to combine their soccer fields together. And what they found out is that they shouldn't have done it because people that were at one soccer field that were taking to go watch a kid at another soccer field were actually stopping by businesses in town and using, you know, the drive-throughs, the subways, Dairy Queens that we have here. So in actuality, by moving it to one center spot, you may just get people that say, oh, we're just going to be up there for the day, and that's where we're going to be, and so we'll bring sandwiches. But if they're separated, you might actually increase businesses downtown. And so I don't know, it's just an idea. But we've got businesses across from... That we built that bridge that goes across to Pizza Hut and Dairy Queen and the Bollin Alley. And you've got this here, and it's beautiful and it works. Just add what we have up on the hill. Leave that here, I think.
Well, the problem was parking here during the pageant and stuff. I mean, there's no parking. That's why we purchased the property over here and made some more parking. So we kind of alleviated some of our headache. But I challenge you in the summer to walk out across this soccer field and just see the condition of it because it is not a nice, smooth field. It's terrible.
And is it the right size?
It is regulations.
Is it the right size?
It's plenty big for... But there's... I'll talk to you. I mean, there was quite a bit into this.
As a soccer parent, I know that the games we've all gone to are already all at Butler. And this one's only been used for some of the Butler kids that I know, but...
I talked to one soccer coach this year, and he says, nine times out of ten, you're chasing the ball down the river because it's so close to the river and somebody kicks the ball.
Any other questions or comments?
It's... That will be at City Hall. The booklet that goes with it should be down there as well and available. And probably post it online somewhere in the future. So if you want to get into the details of it, you're more than welcome. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we're back to communications from the public. Is there anyone that wanted to share a thought? No other communications from the public? All right. Personnel. Any comments there? All right, we already did the hearing. We have several resolutions. The first one being the salary resolution.
We had, at budget time, we did have certification for the librarian and the assistant for each certification, and she did have that in her budget.
So, what we, we get that?
We talked about certification for the librarian in our budget.
And we, for, we go and know.
No, we didn't vote on no.
Well, we didn't want to go, we talked about, discussed.
We agreed on her budget, and her budget hasn't been there.
She wasn't there at budget time, but we can certainly look at this.
For the librarians?
Yeah, here's her two certifications.
So, are we going to start doing this for every department in the city? Because there are a lot of them that did certification.
And we did give some, didn't we?
It's just water and sewer, because they have to have.
At CDLs.
They don't, they don't get nobody from CDL.
We talked about it, and we asked about budgets.
I don't think we do for CDLs, or some of the conversations that I've had with the others, yes.
Yes, we did.
I disagree on that.
It was, it was.
Yeah, I wasn't there at budget time, I don't have the copy of the budget and the library for the year.
Up to us.
Yeah, I believe that.
Is there a budget?
It was brought up to you at budget time.
Last year, we did talk about having that done this year, and she didn't do it.
We will.
This is without that, then.
This is without that, yes, both her and her assistant.
The citizen inclusion cost a little?
Yes. It would be 2226 for Cindy and 1433 for Dawn.
From the time a police officer gets any kind of certification, we're going to go up in dollars, is that what you're saying?
We have in our job descriptions what is required of them.
And this is not?
If Kate's required for Misty to go to school every year, she gets certified, she can get a dollar every year for going to school?
No, that's up to us next year.
It's in her job description.
Up to us next year.
I disagree. Water and sewer, we have to have those throughout the plan. The rest of them don't have to have.
They got certification for our library to be certified as top-notch library, so I think it's.
We're going to have to vote on that somehow.
Well, we're going, Misty's going to look into it from a budget perspective, last year versus this year.
And this is just including.
And I know Cindy did talk.
And this is just including the 3%, so.
Yeah.
The resolutions for the increase in the cost of living.
What's the?
The 52 cents we're, nothing else.
I make the motion, please, sir.
All in favor? Opposed?
Upstate.
Thank you. Motion carried. Okay, next resolution, designation of depositors and official newspaper.
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstate.
Thank you. Motion carried. Okay, next resolution, it's our Ingestora Irrigation District Water Service Contract.
Why would we, why would we do, we do this, I guess, when we were told that we're not supposed to have any crops anymore? If we're going to put grass out there, we don't need the water.
So, we're just throwing money away every year?
How much is this?
Four thousand, three hundred and something.
We haven't used it in three years, I don't want.
Yeah, I was going to say, but I think if you lose it, you lose it.
Yeah, we don't want to lose our water rights.
You can't, you have crops.
They do have certain amounts, you can minimize.
We can do hay, we can do short grasses.
We're not going to irrigate hay, trust me. But we put crops in this year and never used it. We never used it.
You need to, we need to really think about giving away water rights or not.
This isn't a water right.
What's the right to use this water?
I guess we need to talk to our city engineer then about this.
And another thing, if we're one of the last ones on the totem pole, if the water's low, we don't get to use it, whether we, and then we don't have to pay if we don't use it, but.
Oh, no, we still pay.
No, I mean, if the water gets low, we wouldn't have to. And we can't, if, if the water gets low, the first people.
It's on your day right now, right?
It's kind of like a junior water right, the junior gets off first.
We can table this.
Yep.
Propose that we table this and discuss.
Yep.
Is that okay? Need a motion to table?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So, we need to look into this a little deeper. Okay, second reading of the ordinance 1152 supplemental appropriation ordinance for city administrator.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Yep, I just want it noted that unassigned fund balance is where this money is going to come from, I assume that's a cash fund, I think that's what Misty's told me, and I talked to Robert Fortin about this, don't have it in writing, but he basically, I just asked him, this means we're taking this cash from a fund, and we really don't know what the balance is, and he said that's right, and I just want that in a minute.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, is that Carol must?
Yep.
Carol, yeah. Okay, motion carried. New business, in your packets, you have the Claim and Zoning Commission Annual Report. Any discussion on that? Okay, information, the 2015 municipal election date is June 2nd, 2015.
Did you get, did you, polls, what, class at all on that, or?
I'm sorry, the elections, class? This will be my first go-round with elections, so, we did go to a class, we looked at some of the, some of the rules and requirements, it sounds like the ladies in the office have a great system in place already, and I just plan on following what they've done in the past.
Okay, any other, it's just information tonight, then, new business C, discussion of mural art on Evans Punge, proposed by the cultural development organization. We said we'd discuss it again, if anybody has any concerns, or you want to move forward with that?
Yes, sounds awesome.
All in favor? All in favor? All in favor?
I make a motion to approve it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
We'll vote on it exactly.
Allowing the cultural development organization, it was Diane Gross who came on the front of the team to ask the council if it was okay if they raised funds for another mural in town, and they were proposing that it be on the south side of the Punge building.
So, it's not going to cost taxpayers nothing?
No.
And we need to approve the design?
I was going to say, we moved the, approved the design.
Yeah, that's what we discussed with her. So, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay. Discussion of city employees golfing at no cost? I didn't put that on there, so whoever did.
I did.
Okay.
Kind of like the Punge thing. I, I really don't think that city employees ought to get to do this free, just because they work someplace. I mean, we don't let the street department use a shop or nothing and stuff like that, so I, I, I don't, I just disagree with it. I don't think it should be.
We had a resolution for decreased price last year, I don't know if you remember that?
I do, but they, most of them golf free out there, I worked there.
If it's in their job description, we had talked about that.
There's only one.
I did look into it a little bit further for IRS purposes, and if it's not, it would be taxed if it's a benefit offered where there is a cost involved, if it's part of their job description and it's used per their job description, it's not.
Why do they need golf with their job description?
Really? The maintenance man needs to go golfing, is that what you're telling us?
I think it's the only one.
He knows the darn thing, he knows how the course plays, I'm sure, he's been out there for how many years now?
Probably whoever has the job description, Jason might be the one that has it in it right now.
Well, then I guess Jason should be the one who can golf for free at this point, then.
And we do have a resolution for decreasing costs to the city employees.
What is that resolution?
I'll have to look here.
Who voted on last year?
Well, you know, we have some clarity on this whole Punge, this golf course situation, we've never really received anything on it. I mean, we got half the police department, their families went in for free, you got half the golf people playing golf for free.
I agree that there's a discrepancy in how and who gets to use it, and that's why I brought it up to begin with, Wes, and that's.
You didn't bring it up, we brought it up.
No, I did.
Well, okay, in your mind, you brought it up, but we brought the questions up.
I had a concern for it, and I have discussed it with you before.
Well, you know, the taxpayers are the ones that's ultimately, they're the ones that keep asking us, why this is allowed, why this keeps going on.
And I had stated that there is a difference in who gets what right now with our city employees, we did pass a resolution, and that's all I'm saying right now.
Show it to us, I guess. You know, if it wasn't for the taxpayers, the city wouldn't be able to operate, they can't use this stuff free, so why can the employees?
And last week, you wanted everybody.
Well, he wanted to make it fair. Either one of them, or all of them.
I, I only care this.
And it is a benefit, whether you want to acknowledge that or not.
I said it was, and I said they would be taxed if it's a benefit, that's why I said, I asked you to wait, didn't I?
Do you have the resolution?
I do, I do have it.
Could I see it?
In just a minute, I'll give it to you.
It's the golf course rate schedule that was passed last year, and employee gets a different rate than what a single.
Is that something we could share with the, you know, print out and share with the county?
Of course.
Okay.
You know, I think that's, that's something that needs to be addressed, you know, taxpayers, hot springs get a discount on memberships of fun, but they don't have golf courses.
I haven't seen the resolution, so.
That's something I need to look into, too, I think.
I have to look at the resolution. Okay, going to E, discussion on signing of easements near the Hot Brook Water Pond?
That's mine, too.
Go for it.
If anything gets signed.
Not yet.
We've got it.
We are waiting for, what's his last name, Nelson?
They're the new one?
Or Hanson?
But they're the ones that's crossing our property every day, but they won't let the taxpayers, hot springs cross their 30 feet to get through the taxpayer's property.
It's two different people, and we do not have.
We don't have first party.
We do not have an easement to do that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, why are we letting them cross our property if we don't have an easement to cross there?
Ron Brady stood here and he told us, it was right here in the easement.
The only way he could sell that.
That was, that was going to be included.
I 100% agree, it's something that needs to happen and just not, has not happened yet, and because we do not have the easements filed with the county, we do not have legal rights to tell that guy to unlock his gate on his property.
Well, then let's block our road and tell them to get easement.
I know where he can get some rocks. The only, the only problem I can see with that is we're actually doing, there's two ways in the, we have, if we have an easement from the people that walk the back part of it, which is Nelson and the guy that's in the light, I think.
We don't need an easement.
We don't need an easement, tell them, but they're the ones that are actually driving across our property, not the other guy, because the other guy is before to get on our property.
But that was the deal we made.
Is our attorney working on this?
Yes, our attorney is working on this, yes.
Sure seems like it takes a long time to get our attorney to achieve anything.
I think part of the problem was we, when they sold that, they were under the assumption that the same person was going to buy all of it, and it didn't happen that way.
It is, it's a three-way deal, and we have not all done the same page yet.
But I agree, they need to be something done to get that unlocked. But, however, we need to block off our, because the Nelsons have, there's two ways into that draw, they don't have to cross our property.
But it is city property.
It is, and not city taxpayers.
It is.
These guys out here are.
I would love for this to be completed, it is not, and we do not have legal rights to, we don't, we do not have the easement, we just do not have the easement.
Well, we have the right, we can block the road off, edge things along a little bit.
I don't believe they're even in town, so I don't know if it would be disrupted by that, but I don't think in general we should be blocking our roads. F, we need to set a public hearing on February 2nd at 7:15 PM to vacate an alley for John and Patricia Rowe. Mr. Orton, their attorney, will be preparing a resolution.
How are you doing this?
It was not done properly, so we are redoing it. So, Mr. Orton will be preparing the resolution to, and there was also a typo that the county was, so it's going to be fixed, so we need to have a, the public hearing on February 2nd, if you all, someone wants to make a motion to do that, it'd be good.
I want to back up, when are we going to hear something for this easement, this here?
I don't have a date for you, and it irritates me, too, but I, and I've talked to her about it, she has not received a response, you can't make somebody appear and sign something.
So, we must build a new road across our property, make new one.
Well, that would fix this problem. All in favor?
I'd like to hear from.
Did you put it on the agenda, that you were pressed to hear from the attorney about the next meeting?
That's what I was going to say, I'd like to hear from our attorney, hear from her, our attorney, she said.
Make a motion to have the attorney at the next meeting?
Yep.
There you go.
You want that executive.
I guess that would have to be, but it's about time we get an update on some other stuff.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we're voting on attorney president at next meeting, right? Opposed?
Well, actually, it really wasn't on the agenda, so I don't know.
Well, but it has to do with what he brought up, it has to do with what he brought up, so. An update on the easement.
Okay, so it's square.
It's close.
I don't know why you, why you think you need the motion to have your attorney show up unless you figure.
Because that's the only way.
The only way we're going to get her here.
It's the only way, it seems like we can get her here, look.
You ask, you ask, and it doesn't.
Well, I would think all these, if I'm not voting, you can stop sending their paycheck. Well, hopefully I can.
All right. Anything else on that one? All right. I don't believe I got a motion for that public hearing on the second. On favor? Opposed? Motion carried on F. And I added G earlier, the, um, back when we adopted the agenda, add a motion to set a public hearing on January 20th at 7:15 for a retail off sale, on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license filed by SC Incorporated doing business at Mike's Place.
They're getting a small preference? I couldn't hear you. What was that?
Sorry, this, this only sort of working. They are requesting a on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license.
For Mike's place?
Correct.
When was this hearing scheduled for?
It is not violate state law where they're located in proximity to the school. We've already checked into that.
When is the hearing?
I can't hear you.
When was the hearing scheduled for?
Um, we are, I'm, we are trying to get a motion from January 20th.
At 7:15.
7:15.
They don't consider alcohol or drugs.
Who?
The state. They said it's not against the.
No, Mary checked into it when they requested that. It is not in violation as they've all.
I thought that was the place for the kids to go eat.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I know, but still.
Who they keep it separated?
I didn't get a motion.
If I, if I'm asked as quick, your next scheduled meeting is the 19th, really, or do you push it for March 19th?
Yeah, we, we are closed on the 19th.
I'll make the most for the hearing at 7:15 on January 20th.
Okay. On favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Oh, that's closed. That's over something. Okay. All right, where are we at here? Uh, committee reports now. Oh, I'm sorry, you, you wanted that in the beginning. I'm sorry. Your eight. All right, Caroline.
The committee was appointed to look into solutions for plunge-related issues. Kim Moore is going to be our chair. She was the lead.
I think that's, I don't think that's.
What?
Um, I've asked one of, well, Deanne's already been doing that, so.
Well, we voted on it. Can I just want to get it? We voted on him.
I think that's a conflict of interest.
I don't think we voted on anybody being a chair. In the past in Delta committees, we've all been on an equal playground.
Well, you didn't say anything at the meeting, so I didn't know that. Because we go to Chris, who was at Kim's, and I did, and Theodore wasn't there yet. But I, it doesn't matter. I'm sure Kim doesn't care. All right. From, from my perspective, a councilperson should be the chair.
Okay.
Well, why does a councilperson have to be?
Pardon? Why does a councilperson have to be the?
Because I asked them to. When we set up the committee, I, I asked them to run it.
Yeah, I just go on, I'll try to get finished.
Well, Deanne's already been working.
Okay. Can I go on and finish?
As long as we're okay on that first point.
Okay. Uh, like I said, we were asked to look into solutions for the plunge-related issues.
Um, I have already asked you all to get a copy of this report if you can. You should really read it. Uh, three requests came from this report. One was to have our engineer, I talked to Scott and he said that Tracy could do it. It's checked the structural capacity of the second floor and live and dead loads. I don't know what that means. Uh, but Scott did feel that Tracy could do that. And have the fire marshal inspect and approve the second floor. And the building official or Scott do the ADA approval. Those three things are what we're asking for before we go any further. Okay. The fire mar, we do have a report that I think, you got an email today from the fire marshal?
He sent that, but that was from 2003.
Six.
Okay, and this was requested by these people in 2013, so.
Okay, we've already given Tracy a heads up, so.
And Scott sent me the fire marshal's phone number. You can get in touch with him.
Okay. Uh, he's, that's mine.
I'm okay with having this one.
Sure.
I am too.
Okay.
I guess I will be too.
Anyway, we'll report back to you instantly, so this doesn't die.
Okay, and I've received a request from Aboon, who's the chairperson for the Friends of Edmonds Plunge, the young committee as well. And is there Laura, Laura here?
Yeah.
Uh, Laura here would also like to be on that committee, so if you could let, I think she's already contacted Deanne, because I thought you were the chairperson. So, um, this is the appointed chairperson. Well, she was already doing it, so it was a given in my mind. Um, thank Laura, so what, Deanne, I believe, has your number, right?
Yes, I do.
You told her already?
Yes, I have it on. It was a very busy day. I apologize. I'll call you tomorrow, if that's okay?
Okay.
Or talk to you afterwards.
And, and Aboon, who is the chairperson for the Friends of the Plunge, has also requested to be on that committee, so.
I'm trying to contact.
And I'm down. I'm not adding anybody else, just so you know.
And the plunge group, the volunteers were at our meeting and they were all allowed to speak and they were.
Okay. Do you know when your next meeting will be?
After we get the reports.
Okay. So, you're not meeting again at all until, not until we get the reports? Okay.
Don't we already have something from the engineer and the reports and what?
Not, this course, Scott, the load, the life bearing.
Top product.
He said that Tracy could do that, but no one's ever done it. They did it for a part of it, over, above some machine. It's been done in part of the building, but not the second floor. That's what we were told.
What that cost, they should have done the whole building.
We've already talked to Tracy about it. I guess you, you talked to Scott or something. So, Noah and I talked to Tracy this afternoon, so we'll just move forward with that.
Good.
All right? If, anything else? New business? No?
I don't know anything to add.
I just wanted to ask what the clarification of what the committee was for. Because you originally said it's for the vision of a plunge.
Well, actually, it was created because, um, Kim Moyer came to our meeting on the 29th, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
And requested that we look into, if we had a situation with, um, competing with a private business. And it's expanded into, um, checking out the facility as well.
Well, if you're going to buy $30,000 worth of equipment, you want to know if you can put it up there. So, that's why we're doing this, right?
I wasn't aware that there was any purchase going on at all.
No, it's the fundraising that started all this to buy equipment. And so, that's where this is coming from. If we're going to buy more expensive equipment, we need to know if you can.
Okay. Sure. If that's your pers, yeah, listen. Neil?
Uh, thank you. Um, this fundraising, I heard it was put on hold, but, uh, we're still looking, what about hot water?
I told you it was a hot water.
I, I.
Uh, Tracy is doing, um, a study on what it would cost. He's already given me a couple of numbers already. We're going to, we still need to look into the electricity part of it or indoor propane. Um, but as far as plumbing and electrical, um, he's got a ballpark figure already, just not completed, so it is in progress still.
Thank you.
And operating costs as well. And operating costs. I see a hand. Chris?
I just want to, I just want one chance to be aware of something. What's going on with the plunges right now is what's happening with our federal government, but just on a lower scale. There's, this seems like there's a lot of corruption that's going on, on with the plunges right now. And if you look at what the federal government has tried to do in the past, they've tried to invest like in the green energy industry and it's failed. So, the federal government has shown that if they try to invest in private enterprise, it does not work. And unfair competition exists when the government or quasi-government entity takes advantage of its tax exemption and other privileges to supply private goods to the market and competition with private suppliers. Unfair competition adversely affects all Americans. Small businesses are most vulnerable. When jobs are lost, the poor and unemployed and women are especially damaged. When private enterprises are replaced with less efficient government enterprises, national productivity and competitiveness are adversely impacted. When the tax base is diminished, all taxpayers are injured. The federal government has investigated unfair competition frequently since 1980. And in 1980, the Small Business Administration did a study when yielding numerous grievances and examples and extensions of recommended actions. In 1986, the White House Conference on Small Business labored unfair competition as the third most serious concern in the country for small business. In 1987, the General Accounting Office surveyed 27,000 businesses, nearly two-thirds of which were found to be suffering a degree of unfair competition. And I think we need to look at what's going on with the plunges right now. Because that is unfair competition towards health and life fitness.
Um, I think, well, the person, the person right behind you, we're going. I don't know.
Can I pose the question that updating current equipment is not competition and only in favor of safety?
Wait, I can't hear you very well. You have a very gentle voice.
I do. Yes. Can I make the point that current equipment, they've already been there, they've been there for years, replacing that to new equipment that is safer is not in competition if it's currently already there? Um, if you have something that's broken, replacing it with something new is that in competition if it's already been there? That's just a thought to consider. Do we have your names, please? Brianna Hoots, H O T C. Thank you.
Thanks, Brianna. Okay. You let ladies first. Thank you.
Trey Walker, my name. 2,500 Minicotta, I'm a renter. But, um, I want to thank.
Boy.
Works right now. Thank Caroline and for Diane for letting people sit in the other day at the committee meeting at the plunge. Uh, that was very good. Um, the plunge, it's like we were talking the other day, I think a lot of people don't know what's going on. There's people in the community and use it that don't know the money was borrowed to buy it. You know, there's another bend, a payment plan posted in the paper. There's, that's why there's still a lot of, so much confusion by people who are always like, uh, is a payment getting paid out of revenue right now or is that enterprise fund, borrowed money? There's so many questions. And some of us are worried about what's going to happen in the long run. To, are we going to have a steam room or a pool to go to? Because the revenue is going to have to seriously escalate, keep making these payments over 18 years yet and it's coming out of other funds or something? I don't know how it's all working. It's not coming out of revenue, is it? Like 50.
I'll let, I'll let Misty address that.
Yeah, because nobody knows about this in the whole community and that's why. Noah thought he knows how the money works. Thank you.
Okay. Nope, that's an input. Any other communications from the board? Yes?
Can you explain to me why fundraising can't continue? Like, because fundraising can be used for numerous different things. It doesn't have to be used to buy that equipment right now.
I don't see any reason why. We would have to see.
I was just told that fundraising for the exercise equipment was going to stop. He can probably use it better. Taylor?
Um, the fundraiser wasn't canceled. It's actually still going. Uh, part of the plan to, for the fundraiser was to put up a board and track the progress of each employees and that board is up and the progress is being tracked. Um, the only thing that changed with it was originally the fundraiser was being done to replace current equipment. And then also, it was supposed to be split with the, um, hot water project, uh, project pending Tracy's report. So, right now, it's neither until Tracy's report gets done, but it's a general fundraiser. And there's a lot of things that the money could go towards, so it was not canceled. So, if you would all sponsor, sponsor a plunge employee, by the way. So, I have a sheet with me.
So, I have a question for the plunge. This whole fiasco that's happening right now, by the way, I'm Stacia Walker. And, um, is this going to be a city council agreement, something that you all approve if there's going to be a wait room or no wait room? Or are you going to bring it in front of the actual citizens and make it a vote? Just on how the, how the, the citizens of Hot Springs want to see their plunge? Or is this going to be a unanimous decision between the council?
I think, well, I, first of all, I don't have a, a good answer for you at the moment for that.
Okay.
Um, I do know that the, the, um, purchase of the funds was, was by vote of all the citizens.
Okay.
Um, so that would seem a reasonable thing to do if we were going to completely change or modify what they voted on.
Perfect. I think that'd be a great idea.
But, you know, I think we're a little ways out from that.
Yeah.
We're going to do the reports that Caroline has requested and see where we're at at that point.
Perfect.
That's all you requested, right? Okay.
That's your point.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. I'm going to move into committee reports. All right, um, Carl had to leave, but, um.
Yes, you're going to turn it on the points.
Well, I guess I was going to have a good one in the finance report. We worked up a moment.
Did what? I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not sure what kind of report you're looking for. I'm, I can tell you that, um, we, we are.
I have an overex in my beard.
I can tell you that, uh, the city is working with auditors right now to get our folks up to date and anybody who has a checkbook can tell you that if you don't know where you start, you don't know where you are. Um, we are about halfway through 2013 with our pre-audit, about halfway near June. Uh, it's going to take the time for the auditors to go back and look through the books and post the adjustments that need made before I can give you the right answer. Everyone's asking for numbers and wants their questions answered and I certainly want to be able to provide you the correct information. But the more and more information that gets out there right now that is most definitely not accurate, the more confusing it's going to be. So, I just ask you to give me and the auditors the time that we need to get those numbers right before you start poring over them and wasting your time.
Can you tell us about how long that might be?
Uh, yes, they hope to have the pre-audit done by the end of January, but they're getting in the middle of a busy season for the city in 2013 and that is just 2013's pre-audit. Um, so, I'm not sure if they'll be done with that by the end of January. Once they get past the busier months in the summer with the golf course and the plunge, they'll probably be able to move quickly through the rest of '13 and then our audit for '13 will start and they'll be in the pre-audit for '14. Hopefully by the middle of the year, uh, the adjustments need to be made. They need to identify the things that need to be adjusted first, so, I, hopefully by the middle of the year, although that's out of my hands.
How gross are those adjustments? Because it just, it, to me, it seems strange that we come to the meeting and the bills this week are $50,902.53. this week are fifty thousand nine hundred and two and fifty-three cents and we don't have cents within $10,000 whether the plunge is, you know?
Yes. We can tell you the expenses and the revenue. One of the things the auditors identified early on is that our 941 payroll taxes weren't posting correctly to our fund accounting software, so every fund within the city is going to be affected by those adjustments. The amount of those adjustments, I don't have for you. So I can't tell you how grossly it will be, but we can probably come close. All the expenses that have posted as far as bills coming in, I can show you those too. All the revenue that's come in, the plunge brings it in every day, I can show you that too. I just don't want to start reporting numbers that may change.
Thank you.
How come the audits themselves are so far in the rear? I mean, to where it's, it's, it's got to be a real struggle for the city to try to move forward budgeting and everything else when they don't even know what's happened in the past.
Absolutely.
It's a very good question and...
And it's a very difficult position.
The, the city is not current on those types of activities and that's why we separated out the finance officer and the city administrator positions so that those things can get done in a more timely manner.
You had one city finance officer for forty years that kept them up to date. Why did you separate them when all her audits were on time? So why did you separate them then? You're making it sound like you had to separate it because it was such a big...
We did not have the enterprises back then that we do today.
The Evans Plunge that was bought two years after? It doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
I'm not sure I understand your...
You're saying that you had to split the position from a city administrator and a finance officer, but the finance officer did it for forty years prior to that. She, she was one person that did that, so why, why is it so far behind? What's causing it so far behind?
I'd ask your former mayor.
Yeah, that question I did.
She did a wonderful job and hopefully I can fill her shoes. She certainly did. And Cindy, in my defense, we're both new and we're trying to do the best we can with what we have.
I am a taxpayer in the city. I moved back to this city and, you know, my mother worked hard for this city and, you know, and to this day, people are saying, why is the city? And I'm her son. And people are saying, why is the city so far in, in the back? Why are there, why are their audits not being done? And they're asking me, somebody that just moved back, you know what I mean? I mean, we've got to come to consensus that we've got a problem and we've got to get it fixed.
And that's exactly what I'm doing.
So quickly.
That's exactly what I'm doing. I agree with you, things were not done.
I think we're all trying to do that.
They should be the last few years and we're going to get that straightened out. It takes time. And, and there are entities now that weren't part of the city back then as well that are significant.
One, the plunge.
Exactly. It hasn't changed that much, but...
The plunge is a huge difference.
We had enterprise funds before. Like I say, you, you need to ask your former mayor's my, my thoughts.
Well, I'm just concerned as a taxpayer.
Sure.
I'm hearing about...
As you should be.
I'm, I'm hearing about, let's give out free golf, let's give out free this, let's give out free of all this other stuff, but we don't know if we're in the red or the black or we don't know if we've got enough money to pay the loan payment. We don't know where the money's coming from, but yet we're so worried about whether or not someone's going to get free golf. We literally gave a police officer with fourteen years' experience tonight on the agenda a twelve-cent raise, twelve-cent raise. And we're talking about giving somebody a membership to the golf, to golf course? You know, it doesn't make sense. And, you know, maybe not give out the benefits, let's get everything fixed. I'll help out, whatever you need me to do, I'm a member of the community. You know, let's, I mean, that's just not right.
Best thing I would suggest is, and I'm a taxpayer here too, besides being on the council, is right now we're in the process of trying to straighten some of this stuff out. And we all agree that it's not going probably as fast as we'd like to, but we inherited some problems and we're trying to fix them. And that's, that's all I can say in respect to Cindy and Misty is that, that we've had to back up and gather up some stuff that, that wasn't, I don't think it was purposely not done right, but it was not done right and we're just trying to, to get it straight as quick as we can. I mean, that's all we can offer you right now is, you know, and, and I agree with you that this stuff with, you know, who gets free this, who gets free that, but the overall total consensus of this council, and I'm going to speak for you guys whether you like it or not, is that we want this stuff settled too.
I'd like to take issue with something Wes just said. He said, talk to the former mayor. We sat at these meetings when this was being discussed about purchase Evans Plunge and listened to the mayor repeated, former mayor repeatedly say, I'm staying out of it. I told him, you handle it. I'm staying, and all the time, everyone in the room knew he was up to his gills in it. But to say, ask the former mayor, you're not going to get a different answer than you got when he was the mayor.
Somebody changed their mind, he said he's buying assets. What is that asset now?
Yeah, we recognize that there's problems, we're trying to fix them. I'm trying to staff City Hall to make that happen. Kim?
Are we having just open discussion here so I can just ask any question?
Not necessarily.
Just a quick question, what is the city's protocol on fire exits?
Fire exits?
Fire exits.
It's state regulated.
Okay, so there's no fire exit upstairs at Evans Plunge? This is one of the things we were looking at.
We actually have a report from the state fire marshal on that.
So is it, I mean, with no fire exit up there? Is there a fire exit up there?
No, there's not. I checked his site today and he said there's not. He sent you this report today.
Okay, where is it? And is that door unlocked because any entrance or exit out that we checked, all the doors were locked and per TD, that door has to remain locked, locked? So is it even safe for people to be going up there at this time?
For the state fire marshal, yes. We, I have a report right here.
Where, where's the, the fire doors at?
That's from, that's the old, like, 2003 or six? Six, right. We're going to get a new, but the doors haven't changed, so we're going to get another report.
So what is the standard protocol for all businesses? I mean, if, if we went in there as a private business, I mean, we have to, that's got to be passed before our doors are, are even open. How did that slip by with the city? I mean, is it because it's a city entity? It's overlooked?
Because we have a report that says that the state fire marshal is okay with the configuration up there. But that was okay when it was owned by the other owners, am I correct?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I mean, we said you know it then. Well, we're going to look into that for Carol Ann's request.
I just want to know what the standard protocol is because if it was somebody else, Taco John's, would you, I mean, that's privately owned and they don't have a direct...
The city has the same building inspector that any, I mean, Scott has approved the fire egress there, our building inspector, and he's worked with the state fire marshal on it. And we can look at it again per the request of your committee. He was the one you're on.
I'd like to know where the fire doors upstairs, do you know where that? You got to go back down the stairs, get out while the fire is in between you and the stairs going downstairs.
I guess the ramp is what...
Actually, having a concrete ramp is safer than wooden stairs in a fire, is what I was told today. Scott told me today that that ramp would not, he wouldn't approve it for a fire escape.
Is there still carpet on the floor?
That's what he told me.
There's nothing on it right now.
I really don't think this is anything that's on your agenda.
We're looking into it, Kim. All right. All right, last one on this one.
I know the TV had a sound. I had a compliment. There's people I know that watch the council meetings on the TV and they were all rejoicing seeing the last spirit on the 29th one. People were kicking things up, talking things back and forth and it was, people were happy to see that then. You hear people talking to that, they, they watch the people thinking.
We have a very engaged, passionate community.
Yeah, well, yeah, because people were happy to see that. You guys are, that was people, yeah, they were happy to see that, so excellent.
Yeah, well, where all do we have? We're going to have it much more accessible going forward, but I'm going to go on to the committee reports. Thanks for your interest. I'm going to cover for Carl here. First of all, good news about the personnel manual being approved from the administrative report. The other part of Carl's responsibilities is code enforcement. We did get several complaints, five complaints on residents and Mary will be sending them letters tomorrow. She drafted those today. So I'll, Dwight of the works.
We went over 2015, what we'd like to see for some of the projects in town. For water main improvements, Garden Street, Tian to Loop or Water System, basically the Legion to the, the old Dairy Queen, finishing Albany's water main. A short section on Dakota Street. And the 2015 sewer plants will be the trickle filter that's already gone out of bed and awarded and the wet well patch. The water fill station, the new water fill station, city crews will do the water and sewer lines.
Can we make sure that Kurt's aware of the location of that just to make sure?
Let me talk to him about that.
I just want to make sure that we're all the same. Okay, all right, good.
And that we will go for electric, or bid for electric and interior plumbing and possibly purchase a pre-built concrete building to set the housing in to make it vandal-proof and everything else. Talked about a valve exercising schedule, now we purchased the new valve exercising machine that I'd really like to see our administrator take a role in, that we get a schedule going to exercise these water valves and to make sure that everyone gets done every year.
And the fire hydrants?
And the fire hydrants, present. Street improvements, the Hickory Street drainage is something that's been put off for a long time. We need to try and get that taken care of. Valley View Road needs a lot of work. West End Albany, there's some curb gutter needs done. Let's see. That's it, that's all I got.
We talked about something else, selling of the armory. Remember?
It wasn't on the agenda, we might have talked about it.
Well, you asked if anybody else had anything to put on the agenda and I said that somebody's interested.
I did write it down.
Someone was interested in buying our armory up there.
What are they going to do with it?
Just store his stuff in it. I already talked to the people up there. Gerald, I guess you talked to him?
I would just ask him, who's going to buy it for what?
I don't know.
Private citizen?
I think my question was how much they want to get for it and what are they going to do with it? And you couldn't really answer that.
No, I told you what they're going to do with it. He wants to store like his camper and stuff.
We wouldn't let the last private citizen be...
But we're storing our stuff and why are we doing that?
I don't, not by my view.
But if we sold it, it'd get put back on the tax roll. Right now it's just...
Possibility. I'm not going to say no, am I?
Tim Ross, that's who wants to buy it. He never talked to you?
Not yet.
He told me he'd talk to you.
One sentence, that was it.
He just said he never talked to you.
One...
Okay. All right, Wes, first.
We have a meeting.
Okay. Carol Ann, you're at the Plunge. Georgia?
Well, on the 29th, we also had the golf course. Well, actually, we had our, our presentation from the architect and that was on the master plan and it was down here at the Miller Center. And quite a few different ideas and things and we did get that.
Should I make a vote if they were going to be here?
I don't think that, it's a date in February.
The final one will be in February.
That will be, okay.
That will be a public...
Right. This is just an narrative that he did on it. And Kathy had questions about the liquor license change, if there was one, and golf course. They both had questions on salary and versus contract and we did discuss that. Misty talked to them about leaves and how they compress their work weeks and all that. On Jason's report, he gave timelines, irrigation and rates changes and number of playgrounds that we offer, those were issues to schools and volunteers. The Plunge, we met and Cindy Nolan attended that and Theodore gave his goals and concerns list and he talked about the fundraisers. The library I met on today with Cindy and we talked about salaries and certifications. In the airport, we had a master plan presentation from the SEH architects. And we have that here too, if anybody wants to look at that. The wages for Ed were discussed, he's the only person that's out there for 24/7, so I'll call all the time. So that was a concern. And Chris, I met with Chris at the Plunge and he is doing a bunch of changes for the cost on the depot, I mean, over $50 per use down there. I think he came and talked to us about that and he was going to order the dishwasher.
Okay, great. Misty, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Get it all out of your system. Okay. My report, I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware that we now have a police Facebook page. We already have 450 likes, it's probably up from this afternoon, 5,000 impressions. So we wanted you all to know that there is that Facebook opportunity for you to know what's going on in public safety. We also had a person contact us from Maine who collects police department patches and...
Her son collects.
Her son, her son, thank you. And so it's, it's being viewed far beyond Hot Springs already and it's been there not even two weeks, I think. So just check that out and like the police Facebook page. The city Facebook page is also very active and we're going to have that more active so that you're aware of agendas and topics and activities in the city a little more frequently than has happened in the past. Just a general statement that now that we have Mr. Schroeder as our city administrator, he will be doing the agendas for these meetings going forward, so if you want to be on the agenda, you should contact him. And that's all I have.
I would like so, put on the agenda for next time, discuss the armory, why we can store stuff in there when nobody else can. I guess I have something to add on that public safety, we were supposed to have an update, I guess.
There's a second, Monday in the morning.
I just, I feel doing away with that public safety committee was a mistake, I, because it covered way more than just the police department. I just, I, I don't even feel having public safety...
Carl is doing the code mortgages.
But there was, I can give you the whole listing of what's probably safe to use to do. I don't know if you really realize what it actually done, but I, I feel we've lost an asset. All the city buildings are under public safety. There's a lot of stuff. There was always people there and now they don't even know they're at the meeting. That's it.
Well, that's why we're trying to get the word out.
Anyway, on a positive note, I'd like y'all to know that this part of South Dakota was mentioned on Good Morning America this week as one of the better, third... Third best place in the United States. Third best place in the United States to come and visit, so now's the time we get on the horse. South Dakota, South Dakota. But they mentioned this, the Black Hills area specifically, so.
You mentioned the Round W and the...
Sturgis Rally, nice picture of Bob Rushmore.
And the Ball Cocks.
Something for you to wear?
Good for our... I don't know. They're on their slide. So it's not like anyone's...
All right, that was all I had. And I have not received a request from anybody to go into executive session.
I think we need to... I thought we had to discuss something.
You want to?
Yeah.
All right.
Is that a motion?
I think motion, go ahead. Executive session.
And no action taken?
Well, maybe.
I did nothing to... So much specify, it's legal.
Yes, yes, we are. You're supposed to tell while you're going to the executive session.
Thank you.